Okay, seems we have everyone, so I'm going to start the stream on social.
Ed Betts is still trying to get in, Frank.
Oh, okay. I'll wait one then.
How about Kathy Schoff? Is she getting on?
Okay, I, I think I'm here, but I can't see my picture. Okay. Yeah, okay, there I am. Thanks.
I just got your text, Kathy.
I started at 5:15. I have a hard time getting on. I need to take a half hour to get on next time, I guess.
It wasn't easy this time for some reason.
Do we have all council members on now, Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, we have all council. We're just waiting for the solicitor.
We'll give it another minute if Ed can't get in. We'll just start if that sounds good to you guys and go from there. I want to thank Renee for helping setting us up with the chief. Chief, thanks for all your efforts. It's been a little tough times we've been going through, but we'll take it a step at a time and I'm sure end game will be good results, so I'm going to guess with Ms. Lamas if you would like to just start the study session off and we will proceed.
Okay, sounds good.
Renee, give me 30 seconds.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming today and for those of you who are watching from home. Today we have Chief Dan Spizzi of Erie Police Department, and he presented this policy on the body worn cameras, the process that they went through and the protocol going forward to the Strengthening Community Partnerships Council back in March, right before COVID-19 hit. And the next step, we had planned with some public meetings to get out and present this to city council and do a study session. And it took a little while. We had to work through a lot of stuff the last few months, but we're finally here and, and the chief is now ready to present this today. So go ahead, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Thanks council for the invite here so we can go over some, some stuff on our exciting program here. The body camera program was something that the mayor had talked about during the election process and immediately upon getting into office, that was one of his mandates, that we get this studied and done right. Why did, why did we want body cameras? Because of the national trend and local incidents, the mayor's promise? And it's also the chief's opinion that body cams are what we need. Some of the important, importance of the cameras we think we're going to see is we believe that a use of force incidents will be reduced. The prosecution and convictions will be simplified. We're going to reduce aggressiveness. We're going to reduce complaints against officers and we're going to improve professionalism. Now, how did we get about where we are now? Well, back in February of 2018, we started a committee of Erie police officers from the command staff, the inspector, detectives, the training unit, the FOP. We had patrol lieutenant, sergeants, corporals and officers. Seventeen committee members in total out of 173. That's 10% of the department participated in helping put this together. We started meeting every two weeks, covering from the beginning, the pros and cons of body cameras, brands of cameras, whether or not car cameras and body cams needed to be used together, what the limitations were, expectations, state law, the guidelines, the model policies. We left the budget for you guys. Thank you very much for approving that. Now, we just didn't do this on our own. The Bureau of Justice Administration, BJA, they have an implementation checklist, toolkit and scorecard. And we followed that all along from the beginning. That enabled us to apply for the grant that we received. We had to follow the federal guidelines all along the process. Everything we've done has been documented and researched, and I want to go into some of the, some of the highlights of this. Now, besides the Department of Justice Model Policy, we studied several other policies from other departments. Primarily, the City of Erie Body Worn Camera Policy is based on Philadelphia's. We also had two additions of Philadelphia's body worn camera. So we saw where they had to make adjustments from when they first went out to things that they discovered once they were implemented that needed changed. We also had Pittsburgh's. We also used Tempe, Arizona, Lincoln, Nebraska, Davenport, Iowa, and Allentown. Now, some of the guidelines and best practices that we use for our research and, and putting this together. As I said, the Department of Justice has the Executive Research Forum. BJA also has the Bureau of Justice Administration, which had the grant guidelines. We use the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, the Pennsylvania Bulletin, PA State Law, International Association Chiefs of Police Model Policy, the PA Chiefs of Police Model Policy, and the FOP Model Policy. We had an issue statement from the ACLU that was taken into consideration and also the New Jersey Attorney General's Body Worn Camera Directives. So we had a lot of research that the officers and everybody were able to review and, and discuss, and we broke it down into sections over the past year and a half before we submitted the grant and developed our model policy. I'm proud to say that when we did submit it to the BJA, they had a scorecard and upon the completion, we, we passed on the first try, flying colors. They asked if we could use, if, if they could use our policy for other departments starting out. They thought that we covered all the bases very well and I'm very proud of all the hard work that the officers did on this. I mentioned state law. Under Act 22 in 19, in 2017, there was law submitted that regards body worn cameras. Part of it involved the, that the change in the Pennsylvania rules for wiretap laws had to be changed in order to proceed with this. Prior to 2017, capturing audio in a residence by police officers could only be done with a signature of a judge. Now, some of the things that we have to set out first on this is called realistic expectations. Part of their information they gave out, there's 10 issues that make realistic expectations of a body worn camera program. A camera does not follow the officer's eyes or see exactly what the officer sees. If the camera is hanging on the front of me, it's recording forward, but if my head or eyes turn, I can see something to the side that may not be seen on the camera. That's extremely important thing to realize when you review body cam footage. It's not like a movie or TV show where there's a camera operator who's pointing it at the right scene. He's keeping it in focus. He's adding lighting. He's adjusting sound. We don't have any of that. We have a single device that hangs from our uniform and we hope is capturing the incident as it occurs. Another thing about the cameras is, number two, the important danger cues cannot always be recorded. When somebody is showing signs of tenseness, breathing, making a fist, taking a stance, positioning to begin a fight, those are, there's some minor signs that may not be captured by the camera. Camera speed differs from the speed of life. Digital cameras have a tendency to pixelate. A camera may not see as well as a human eye does in low light. Our cameras that we have are standard lens cameras. We could have gone with an enhanced, more expensive lens and, and camera that would have seemed better in darkness. But then when we looked at it, we might be seeing things that the officer couldn't see or vice versa. So we have to be careful that the lighting reflects an officer's body may block the view. I'm sure you've all seen footage on YouTube and everything of officers having incidents and occasionally when they bring their gun up in front of them, their arms end up in the camera's view. Again, the officer can't see what's on the camera being recorded, so sometimes they don't realize that and that could block a view. A camera only records in 2D. The absence of sophisticated timestamping may prove critical. Fortunately, the, the brand we have, it's, it's tied to the car cameras. Their interface where both cameras, you can watch the same incident on the body cam and the car cam and it will happen at the same time. If another officer arrives and he activates his camera, his camera will be synced to the officer, the other officer's body camera and the car. Up to four cameras at the same time can be watched at the same exact moment. They're, they're sophisticated and connected. One camera may not be enough. We've all seen professional sports and what happens when a timeout's called because of a replay request. Even on the football field in an NFL stadium with the dozens and dozens of cameras they have, the replays cannot always tell conclusively what hap, what the result of that play was. The same applies to body worn cameras. One camera may not be enough. Sometimes cameras encourage second guessing. We have to remember that we can't Monday morning quarterback that it's the officer's perception at the time of the incident that he takes his actions on. If we had time to think, we would always try to make the best decision. He's making the best decision in the shortest amount of time sometimes, and that could be in a split second. It could be a minor issue. It could be life and death. But we should be very cautious in Monday morning quarterbacking. And a camera can never replace a thorough investigation. Through interviews, eyewitnesses, cameras affixed to buildings or houses, it should, an incident should never be looked at through a single camera lens. If we remember those realistic expectations, that will help as we go forward in the program. Some of the concerns that we've noticed is several years ago in Las Vegas, a hackers convention actually was able to hack into some body worn cameras. And those are the things that, again, the brand we've chose is highly regarded. They were not one of the brands that was able to be hacked, but that's stuff that we did in search of the brand that we wanted to use here. As far as putting this out, it's very important that the public knows about what's going on with the body worn cameras. We've mentioned it many times, but specifically under the mayor's press conferences, we've had three conferences in July of 2019, October 2019, and May of 2020 that we did an extended body worn camera topic. So we continue to push that out and now with tonight, we've had the SPCP Council and now city council. And as Renee explained, on March 11th, after the SPCP Council, it was determined that we planned on doing this publicly. Unfortunately, with COVID, it got pushed back and I guess Zoom is the way we're going to do it. We knew going in that we were looking at approximately a million dollar project for five years. We were able to obtain the grant for $247,000 and again, we appreciate what you've done with the supplemental funding that the city is going to pick up over the next five years. Knowing that this is more money than I've ever spent in my lifetime, I want to make sure I got it right and we've worked hard on it. Are there any questions? The next point I'll be doing is going into the actual policy that we've written. I'll go over some of the highlights of what the officers are going to have within their policy. And then I'll finish up with what the state law actually has in it that relates to the body cameras. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll, I'll begin with the, the body worn policy. Yes?
Chief Spizzi, do you, I do have a question. You had mentioned that we're looking at, it's a $1 million endeavor that we got a $247 grant for for the next five years?
The grant was $247,000. We were a little over a million dollars in the, in it. So we're roughly, I think, $165,000 over the next five, or for five years, which according to finance department, they had included that money in a previous bond and that money has been sitting awaiting for use for the next five years. It's been, it's been incorporated into the budget.
Okay, that's great. And I guess, is there still potential to get more grant money to help us on our end? I, I don't know if the money that's been input in the budget for the next five years, if that's just coming out of our general fund or if we can still apply for grant money to help pay for this?
At the moment, I am not aware of any other grants available, but we will look into that. The grant that we got through BJA was to initiate a program. I'm not aware of any sustaining grants, but I have not researched that yet.
Okay. And it's not, and there again, I mean, I understand there's a certain amount of money there right now, which is great, which is getting the ball rolling, but I, I guess I'm looking at if it's something we're going to have to put in every budget going forward as an additional cost or if it's something on your part that you can get grant monies to cover?
We, we will definitely look into that. At the moment, I know that we are budgeted for the next five years. And that's one thing I want to go back and, and touch on. It's a five-year program. And what that means is that we have a, a warranty on all the equipment. That includes the car systems as well as the body cams. Because it's technology and technology is changing so quickly, we have part of the plan is that after two and a half years, we will get all new equipment from the docking, charging stations here to the actual cameras that the officers wear. If you liken it to your, your cell phone, if you have a smartphone, generally after about two years, two to three years, phones start, batteries start getting weak and they start having internal issues. So the program will replace the, all the equipment at two and a half years and at the five-year mark. So the program will be able to go beyond five years with that new equipment. So the startup costs won't be there. Maintaining the data storage will always be an expensive proposition. The storage of all this data, and I'm not the computer savvy one here that can tell you, you know, how many bytes or terabytes or whatever the terms are. But what I understand is that it's a significant task to control all of that. And what we found out was the cloud storage option, after consulting with the IT department, has determined that the cloud storage that they provided, which is CGIS compliant, and basically that's criminal justice records compliant, which is extremely important that we have our records properly secured and maintained. All of that is covered as part of this program.
Okay. I guess my biggest thing, I was just wondering how it would affect the city budget in 2021, 22, 23, 24, 25. If, if we are, you're saying we're covered for five years. It's already implemented in five years of our budget. Nothing against anybody. I don't recall being on council where we're, we were five years ahead in the budget on certain items, you know what I mean? But
Understood. I'll definitely talk to finance tomorrow and make, make sure.
I'm pretty sure that money was set aside for the, to cover the five years and it's coming out of one of the loan, one of the, the issues that we did is a bond issue where the money's coming from.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just been not saying it's a bad idea whatsoever. I just wondering what the cost is. That's, that's the bottom line sometimes when it comes to some of these issues that where the money's coming from, if there's grant money available to cover year two, three, or four, or five, whatever have you, or if it's something additional that's going to be in the budget. That's all.
Okay, going back to the beginning, one of the reasons that we had so many officers involved in this is that, you know, two years ago, the body cams were a issue that not all officers had the same opinion of. What they were doing, telling us, was they were liking it to consider yourself at your job or former job that your boss decided that they wanted to put a camera above your desk or workstation or attach a camera to you so that everywhere you went during your work was being recorded. And the officers felt like they're being singled out and, and being watched at every moment so that we can find minor problems and, and keep disciplining them. But the policy isn't written to be a disciplinary thing. There are consequences for improper behavior, but the policy is written to make this tool a useful tool to the officers.
Chief, when, when do they put the cameras on? When they get dressed at home and at that point, or they put them on or pick them up at the station?
All the cameras right now are going to be here at the station. There's a docking station that not only charges it, but it's connected to the computers lines so that it downloads any video on the, on the camera. Now, officers will be able to, some of the units don't come into the station at the end of the shift. The ones that have take home cars or special units, they don't always come in at the end of their shift. They'll be able to take the camera home and plug it in to charge it, but that video won't be downloaded until they bring it to the station and dock it. And they'll have to do that every couple of days, but it's something that's in the, written into the policy.
Thank you.
Right. When, when it, when it goes here to the station and it's docked, it's going through a computer line where it's going to be transferred up into the cloud. We don't store any of the video here on the station. It's all in the servers that Axon have. The CGIS compliant is that there are three different locations across the United States that those records are kept at so that if there was a natural disaster in one location, those records would live on at another location. It's repeated three times for security. Now, I'm going to, I'll read right from some of the policy highlights here that I've done. And again, this policy is not complete. I would say we're about 95% done. There's some updates and certain things that when, once we chose Axon as our provider, that there are certain things that their brand has that have to be incorporated into the policy. And we'll be working on that very shortly. If you saw my email this afternoon, the Axon company sends their trainer here on September 1st. He'll be here to train our trainers. They'll be given a couple of days to get their program together, but every officer is going to be called in for a one day training. They're going to learn how to use the, the body worn camera. They're going to learn how to use the, the viewing, the software in the background so that they can send a, a image to a detective for follow-up. That those, they'll make sure that whatever they recorded a scene that's involved in a case, that that actually gets attached in the records to that case number. You have to imagine that there's 99 patrol officers plus special units, almost 130 uniformed officers. And they can go on multiple calls every day. So they'll be recording a lot of different video. In order to go back and find those videos, the videos have to be attached to the incident number. It's part of the process and it's something that the officers will be doing through the computer to sign on to their account so that they can look at what was on the camera and make sure it's been attached to the proper call. Supervisors will also be responsible to not only take care of their own, but they'll have to do inspections of some of the videos. Right now, we believe that what we'll be doing is there'll be two videos per shift that'll be reviewed so that we can make doing is there'll be two videos per shift that'll be reviewed so that we can make sure that the policies are being followed and by, by the officers, both on the call that they're handling and as regards to the body worn camera. Let me talk about the policy. Some of the highlights here. Body worn cameras are not a substitute for an officer's reasonable beliefs and perceptions. Training, experience cannot account for an officer's physiological response. Examples: visual tunneling, auditory exclusion during critical incidents. Body worn cameras should not be viewed as the only measure of truth because they may show more or less than what the officer sees, hears, or observes. Time pressured decisions that officers make during tense, uncertain, rapidly evolving situations should not be reviewed in a sterile environment to create alternative scenario, scenarios, or to use 2020 hindsight. Body worn cameras have an important but limited use as one of many policing tools. A body worn camera will be activated prior to approaching a call for service and during all law enforcement related encounters. When able to be performed safely, this will include, but not limited to initiating a vehicle or foot pursuit, responding to a crime in progress, conducting a vehicle or pedestrian investigation, initiating an on-view arrest, when doing a field interview, when handling a disturbance or crisis-related incident, when handling any protest or demonstration, when confronted by the general public where it may become confrontational, antagonistic, or hostile, when handling a situation or incident that the officer, through their training and experience, believes should be visually preserved, when conducting a suspect interaction. Officers should be mind-volt, and I'll explain this here, but those are, those kind of encompass all the citizen contacts and the reasons why the camera should be on. It's basically pretty all-inclusive. If it's a general, hey, how you doing type, they don't necessarily need to turn on the camera, but we've explained a lot of situations there that they need to turn those on. There's something about the cameras. When an officer turns on the camera, there's a buffer. What that camera's doing, it's recording a 30-second, for 30 seconds, it continues to record and erase itself. So when an officer turns on the camera, it will begin immediately a recording of what's going on, but it will have started 30 seconds prior. Here's my example. This was one of the things that happened during our testing phase. An officer was sitting at a red light in his car when suddenly he was struck from behind. He immediately turned on his body camera. You saw him pull up to a red light. He's sitting there waiting for the red light to change, and all of a sudden you see the camera and him shake when he got struck. When he turned the camera on, the sound comes on. Now let me explain this. If I turn on the, if I see a crime occur and I turn on my camera, there is no sound those first 30 seconds because those 30 seconds happened before I turned the camera on. So if I'm having a discussion, maybe I'm on the phone and I'm talking to my wife or a friend or coworker, and I'm having a discussion about nothing that I'm seeing at the moment, but all of a sudden I see a crime, that personal conversation is not recorded. When I actively press the button on the camera and turn it on, that activates the sound. It takes me video 30 seconds back in case I see something. I see somebody run out of a store with a mask and a gun. He just robbed it. If I turn on my camera, I'm gonna catch it on, hopefully on the camera, but there won't be sound. So you understand why there is not sound at the beginning of those recordings. It's that buffer period. Now what's something else that we have to determine with the officers was, when do you turn it off? At what point are you secured to turn it off? They shall remain activated until the event is concluded. If they turn it off prior to the incident being resolved, they're being told that they need to actually say on the recording why they are turning it off. Now why would an officer turn the camera off? They may be interviewing a victim of a crime or a witness who's requested not to be recorded. They may be at a scene where there's gruesome images or private areas of a, of a individual. If they enter a hospital room. Body worn cameras are not to be worn inside, or not to be utilized inside jails, prisons, or police departments. And that'll come up later on the, the actual state law. Additionally, recordings shall not involve non-work-related personal activities or conversations, places where a reasonable expectation of privacy exists, conversations with a confidential informant or an undercover police officer during a strip search, or if an officer is discussing operational strategies or tactics. Lastly, conversations between fellow employees or supervisors during routine administrative activities. Skip the definition section. Some of the other rules and procedures with this. Only officers who have received training may use them. We are gonna train every officer in the department in their use. Uniformed officers will be assigned body worn cameras, but detectives will not. Officers must be in uniform or clearly identified as law enforcement. They shall only use department-issued body worn cameras. They cannot have their own personal camera devices. They shall not erase, alter, modify, or tamper with any body worn camera, software, hardware, or recorded data. 95% of the department will not even have access to that. It will be limited to the command staff. Body worn cameras shall be worn per the manufacturer's recommendations. If in the event that an incident occurs and the officer forgets to turn on their body worn camera, they must immediately notify a supervisor and document it as part of the report as to why. You think that would be pretty simple, but in a stressful situation, sometimes you don't always remember. I can tell you from experience, and I'm sure if you talk to any police officer, at the beginning of their careers, we'd ride around in our car and we'd end up on a call and we'd arrive and there might be somebody fighting or running and we'd go to get out of that car, put it in park, throw open the door, we're ready to jump out, and we'll forget that we had a seatbelt on. Sometimes in a stressful situation, your mind is thinking, I gotta do this, but you forget, I gotta do this first. Same thing applies to body worn cameras. The, the, the data out there shows that it happens in every department that has them. Occasionally, they do not get turned on simply because of failure to remember during an emergency situation. Again, under operational protocols, we say that the body cam shall be activated when responding to all calls for service and during all law enforcement related encounter, encounters and activities involving general public as identified earlier. We continue to repeat that. It's important that the officers know. It's also, as soon as practical, officers will inform the people that we do have a body cam and we are recording. That is to help the public understand that we have them. It's also to help, help encourage good behavior. An officer is required to deactivate the body worn camera if, I'm sorry, if he's required to deactivate, the officer shall state aloud why the device is being deactivated. If a body worn camera captures a police firearms discharge, seriously injured event, motor vehicle accident involving serious bodily injury or death, or use of force resulting in serious bodily injury or death, the officer's body worn camera shall be taken to the police department by the first available supervisor and uploaded to the system. Means they have to dock it so that that, that recording will go up into the system. That video's footage will be restricted from being viewed. The only people that have view of it will be authorized by the chief of police. That would be the internal affairs inspector, a detective assigned to the case, or a supervisor. This won't be for the officers, but all body worn cameras shall be held for no less than 60 days, and that's because of the state law. And I'll get to that after this here. But all our body worn camera has to be held at least 60 days. The exceptions will be if an officer accidentally turns it on, or he turns it on in a situation that did not require it. If he forgets to turn it off. We had a, one of the car system tests, an officer tested the light system at the, in, at the beginning of his shift. He turned the lights on. When he turned the lights off, the camera didn't go off. He drove his shift for eight hours and recorded the entire shift. There wasn't a whole lot on there, but a request can be put in to have stuff, something like that, delete it. That way we're not using as much storage. Supervisors will be reviewing and monitoring videos to correct adverse behavior and performance deficiencies. Give me a second here. I had a thought, something else I wanted to bring up, but I forgot about. Oh wow, moving on. In no event shall any digital recording captured by a body worn camera be used for the purpose of officer or citizen ridicule or embarrassment. The police chief shall have the authority to release digital recordings to the media or social media outlets as deemed necessary. The body worn camera committee will continue to meet regularly and update the policy as necessary. We figure in the next couple weeks, in September, when we have the training, the officers get them, they go on the field, we're gonna find some issues and stuff that we're gonna need to clarify to the officers. So the body worn camera committee will continue meeting and going on. It's actually part of the um, required policy that BGA requires. One of the issues that's included in the grant is actually a position for the body worn camera coordinator. It's paid 100% of an officer's salary for the first year in order to get the program going. That officer will not only answer all the questions and issues, but also has to do compliance reviews that we have to report to the federal government. He's gonna be reviewing videos. He'll be ensuring that supervisors review videos. And all of this has to be reported to the federal government. That's the highlights from the department policy. The last part I have here to talk about is specifically um, Act 22, or it's chapter 67 of the crimes code now, and that's the body worn camera.
Hey Chief, Ed Brzezinski here.
Yes, Ed. Yes.
Uh, just going back there, you said supervisor will be paid his full pay to take care of these body cams? Uh, what happens to the position that we had that officer in? You understand what I'm trying to say?
Well, for one year, we're gonna transfer that officer into another position. What we've been looking at is coordinating a lot of our technology initiatives in the future when the grant runs out. We believe that we're gonna leave that officer in our, uh, like a technologies position. He'll be working the social media, our computers, our in-house computer system, um, our license plate reader system, and any other technologies that come out that uh, uh, we can have that person work. He'll also be assisting officers in investigations too. It won't be like he won't be used. Um, but yes, it is taking away from the, uh, an investigator's spot.
Yes.
But he will still be assisting investigators.
Understood, Chief. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Sure.
You first.
Thank you, Michael. Um, I have a question about the 60 days. So does the officer wear the same body camera each of those 60 days? He's assigned to a specific one?
Okay, the office, the uh, main patrol officers will have this, they're assigned a camera. That will be their camera all the time to take care of, and they're responsible for its condition. Um, every couple days, they'll dock the ca, or every day, they can dock the camera, and that video will go to the cloud.
Uh, Michael Keys. Uh, question is, uh, I know there's constraints because of, you know, um, contracts and stuff, but does it have to be a, an officer, or could you hire an IT specialist and attach them to the police department?
Well, by using an officer who has the IT background or capabilities, when he's reviewing the videos, he's also looking at the procedures and policies of the department. Therefore, having an officer who knows the policy and procedure as a supervisor, he'll also have the ability to point out issues and make corrections. Does that help?
Well, it, or it explains the rationale, but I was just, it was just, it doesn't answer the actual question though, so.
Well, if, if, he, because he's uh, doing compliance reviews for the, the uh, the grant, it, it... Well, if, because he's doing compliance reviews for the grant, it should be an officer. I don't know that we have any civilians that would be capable of, they didn't basically have to go through the police academy and understand not only our department policies, but they'd have to understand the state laws. So essence to your question, yes, it has to be a police officer.
My question is, does it have to be a male police officer? Because every reference that you made to officers tonight was he, 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 and that's not ha, ha, ha on my part, but, you know, it really, language matters. So does it have to be a male officer, or could a woman be the compliance officer?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm 30 years, I'm just, I'll do better on that.
How many women are on the department?
I believe there are seven or eight.
So odds aren't great anyhow.
Pardon?
I have a question about how you settled on using Philadelphia? Because I see, there was just a story from NBC News in July with some critiques of the officers' use of body cameras in Philadelphia. So why Philadelphia's policy versus, you know, a city closer in the size to Erie?
Well, we did look at Allentown in Pittsburgh, Davenport, Iowa, and the other ones that I mentioned, but Philadelphia's policy was, I think, it was longer, it covered more of the details, so that it was clear to the officers. When they read the policy, they'll be, the other ones we saw did not have as much detail. I think the officers reviewed Philadelphia and believed that it covered more of the details. Okay. No other questions? I'll move on with the law. Again, this was changed in 2017, which allows recordings inside of a house and stuff, but a citizen can request the video from the police department. This does not fall under the right to know. It falls under this new Act 22. An individual requesting the video must request it within 60 days of the event. So they have two months to put in a request. They must specify what the event was, the date, time, and location that the event occurred. They must describe the requester's relationship to the incident. Why is this person requesting that video? And why is that important to put in the request? Because when our coordinator looks at these requests, he must know that this person has some active reason to have the request of that video. Why is that? Well, we're going to be in people's houses, and if somebody just wants to know, I saw the police go into my neighbor's house, and I don't know why, I'm going to put in a request to know. I wanted to see that body cam footage. Well, that we can deny. They don't have a relationship to the incident of what happened in there. If that person, you know, if an officer came to your house and had his camera on and neighbors wanted to see, they would have information of personal nature from your house. Maybe there's young children or grandchildren in the house, somebody that has a medical condition that's, you know, impaired. Any of those issues that are happening in a private residence are not to be made public. So therefore, the requests have to have a relationship to the incident at hand. They can request a video from within a residence, but they have to identify the individuals present in the house. So this way, that's kind of the check that the law put in there to ensure that we're not releasing the video to somebody that should not get it. There are no recordings to be released that were taken inside a prison, jail, or police department, or if it contains potential evidence in a criminal matter, a criminal investigation, or if charges were made. If charges are made, that video then becomes part of the case, and that is obtainable through the discovery process, which is part of the court's rules. So if any of the recordings fall in that category, they will be denied. If there is confidential information on there, or reasonable request by a witness or a victim who does not wish to be recorded, those will not be recorded. If a request is met and is within 60 days, the police department must written response if we've denied the release of the video. We have to tell them why it was denied. If they wish to appeal that decision, that will fall on the district attorney's office. If the district attorney's office denies it, the people can then go to a county judge and file an appeal with the county judge. That's all falls under the court system rules.
Hello, Chief.
Yes.
Some of this stuff, yes, you are explaining to us that are probably definitely out of our realm. I guess one of the major topics that this is all going to officially fall back upon is how does this fit in with a citizen review board? If it is an asset to still have one or not have one? Where do we stand with something like that when you have the body cameras and with all the information? I mean, and you've given us a lot of information, probably more information that we would have had questions for. I'm asking the golden question of where that fits in with where we are today with citizen review board and moving forward.
Well, I'm not going to say it eliminates the effort that needed. We'll always need citizen input. Policing revolves around input from citizens. You know, that's the whole reason that gives us our legitimacy. I think that based on the findings that we've been researching, that the use of force complaints in departments that initiate body worn cameras drop off the records. It's amazing what I've been reading in departments, how many complaints don't, they may have had so many, and they disappear once the body cams start. There's two theories to that. One, the officers were acting properly and the citizens are now realizing they're being captured on video doing something wrong. Or two, because the police officer's on camera, they're now acting better. So you got those two theories going. I don't know which the right answer there, but we do know that the departments that do have them have all recorded a drop in citizen complaints. Now, that brings up, you know, obviously a topic that we still need to discuss, and I'm not prepared today with a whole lot of information, but I do have a little bit of information here that I think is important. The Internal Affairs Division, the inspector, he documents every internal case he does. And those cases can involve a multitude of things. It may be a policy violation by an officer, or a disciplinary thing where a supervisor told him to do something and he didn't do it properly. He violated a department policy. He may have had a disagreement or problem with a fellow officer. It may be related to an action outside of work, such as drinking issues. Of those investigations, and I'll just go, I'll just give you information from two completed years. This administration began in 2018. We had 61 investigations, and I note that 11 of those investigations were carried over from 2017. The inspector had left the department, and there were 11 investigations that weren't begun. So we began those 11 investigations, so we had 61 internal affairs investigations in 2018. Of those 61, use of force complaints account for three. Three of the investigations were specifically use of force by officer complaints. In the complete year of 2019, the inspector had 63 internal affairs investigations. So he went from 61 to 63. Of those 63 cases, six of them were use of force complaints.
Chief, Daniel, a second again? Can we go on record to find out where your position is for the civilian review board? Because I have spoken at council meetings already, saying that I don't really think we have a need for one. We might need more transparency from you, so that people know what's going on. What's your position?
I have not come to a final decision on it. We are still doing research. There's many different versions of a citizen review board, and I am not, at this point, ready to make the call one way or another. Michael Outlaw's here, and he's been working on this, too, with us. There's many different versions of it. I think that there may potentially be a version that is appropriate for us, but in light of everything going on in the past two months, we are still doing a lot of research. We'll be working on it. We'll be scheduling that as one of our near future meetings, but I'm going to, I'm going to say I'm undecided at this point.
Well, the council will work forward, then.
Chief, you've definitely, definitely given us a lot of information tonight, and we definitely appreciate that on the advantages of body cams. With that being said, any of my colleagues have any additional questions, whether involved with the body cams themselves or other items that are police-related?
Yes, I do have a question, if I could.
Certainly, David.
For the dashboard cameras that we have, I know, of course, they'll be working and teaming with the footage with the body cameras. And any other thoughts there? Is there any upgrades there, or maybe there just was one? I'm trying to remember back to see, but, you know, that'll continue to be a focus also, because it does have a lot of coverage also, correct, Chief?
Yes. You know, during a traffic stop, a car chase, or an encounter where the car camera's activated and may catch that second view, the car cams are, we are purchasing 12 units, so 12 cars will be outfitted with the systems. Those are our 12 frontline cars. All 12 of those have been purchased within a year, so there are newer vehicles that we expect to keep in the fleet for a while. It will help get us the program up and running, and we hope that each year, upon purchasing additional cars, which in the past, we've, you know, three or four cars per year, we'll continue installing the car cameras in the new cars as they come in. It won't be as large of a bill, because it'll only be, hopefully, three or four systems at a time. So eventually, more of the cars will have them, but initially, it'll only be the frontline cars.
Okay, thank you. And I do have another question. With the cameras themselves, how do, how have other cities measured the effectiveness of the cameras? You know, because there's, like you said, they're not perfect, but has there been measurements or some type of data to say this is definitely the right decision? Or in five years, do we kind of look at it again and somehow measure effectiveness?
I happen to have two articles here. One's titled "The Ferguson Effect: Police Body Cameras Have Little Effect on Officer-Citizen Behavior," but as it goes in, it says that they have not seen statistically significant or consistent effects. This was the Center of Evidence-Based Crime Policy at George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia. Another one here that I looked at was an article out of Washington, the Post Bulletin. There's a few other ones. There's actually a lot of data out there. None of them are conclusive. None of them have an exact answer, but overall, the use of the camera systems have been, have shown reduced amounts of complaints on the police department. That's something that's consistent with everybody we've spoken to. Even speaking to our officers that were reluctant or scared about having the body cameras after the incidents of May 30th, I would say that most, everybody in the department now wants a body camera, so that people can see exactly what they were encountering that night. And I think as the future goes on, the officers will embrace these wholeheartedly, because it'll show exactly what happens.
Chief, this is now. If and when we get a citizen review, for lack of a better term, and the incident occurs, the citizen review board has no direct relationship to the individuals, will they be able to review the body cam?
That would be something we'd have to determine, you know, depending on which option goes for, we end up going for. You know, one of the things, again, I want to, I'll emphasize, was that the internal investigations from 18 and 19 involved a total of nine incidents that were complaints of use of force. Now, several of those cases, the citizen was not accepting of the findings that we had. They were reviewed by the district attorneys, and they weren't accepted by, you know, their ruling either. They took the next step, which was to go and file a civil suit. In all of those cases, I believe that the U.S. Attorney's Office, who also could have investigated, passed on those investigations. So the citizens always have that next step. We are currently involved in several civil cases that involve use of force. So there are steps, even though the police may make a determination that it was acceptable, we are not the final determiners on that. We are reviewed by the district attorney, the U.S. Attorney, as well as the Attorney General's Office, and as a last resort, citizens have the civil procedure to go through.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? I told you I tried to make it shorter than an hour and a half. I think I've accomplished that, just a little over an hour.
Nice job, Chief. Thank you.
I understand that you have another meeting scheduled next week for study session. I know that we have several issues. Internal Affairs obviously being a primary thing, but some of the shootings and homicide stuff, we have been gathering some data also that is important to, to look at. And more importantly, are a lot of different policy reviews. We've received many different things. A lot of you probably received the same email. I think it was called "Eight is Great." There were eight suggestions about improving police policies and, and we're reviewing those. We'll be prepared shortly to discuss where we stand with things like that. There's also been some legislation that the governor has passed and approved. Reporting for incidents that police officers misconduct that needs now to be reported. It'll be followed by the police commissioning board. And there was, I think, two other laws that were passed by the governor that I have on my desk. We're doing research to see exactly how it affects us. I will tell you this. The Erie Police Department back in around 2004, I believe it was, so very close to there. They completely revamped the policy and procedure book. Basically, they threw out the old book and it was rewritten. Now, we've done multiple revisions. As a matter of fact, this administration itself, each year, has updated several policies in the book. It's something that changes regularly as additional information comes in. I want you to be aware because I've seen some rather large departments in different places, places in the country, and I'll just take one example. You know, a chokehold. You know, police, you know, the citizens want chokeholds banned. And I think it's important to know that our policy here at the police department does ban chokeholds. It's one, one example of many. But when it was rewritten in '07, they were banned, or '04, not only were they banned in that policy, except if lethal force is necessary. If for some reason, an officer had to use lethal force, they could apply it there. But if there are not the circumstances of lethal force, they've been banned here in our department. And I think a lot of that stuff that we're going to see, we'll talk about. That the policies are in place, there are state laws that are in place. Some of these are coming from other states that don't have the, the same rules that we're already following. But I think you're going to be pleased when we talk about that. Just need a little bit more time to prepare and then we'll get it scheduled here either later in August or beginning of September. If any of you have anything in particular that you find, that you have questions about, please, please don't hesitate, call, stop in, email. I did send out a couple of emails here recently, two today, and one or two recently. But I will start doing that much more frequently so that if you want to stay in the loop, you'll, you'll understand where we're at. But don't hesitate to ask questions. I'm always here, always open to making the department and the city better.
Thank you, Chief. I don't know if the mayor has any final comments himself, since he's with us.
I just appreciate all the work the chief and his staff have done to do this very detailed presentation today. They really looked at it closely. And I also appreciate everyone from city council sitting in on this as we continue to work to try to figure out how to make Erie a better place, which I think we all want to find a way to do that. We want everyone accepted regardless of the color of their skin, their gender, their sexual preference, none of, none of that matters. Every person has something to offer and that's what we're trying to get to. And I appreciate council's help in doing that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from council? I would like to thank Renee for helping set this up this evening. Thank you, Chief, for the very detailed explanation of how the Erie Police Department is moving forward to make this a better community.
Thank you, President.
With that, I believe we're going to adjourn. Thank you all for, thank you all for being a part of this.
Thank you.
Thanks. Goodnight.
All right.